All right, we're gonna get started. This is a regular scheduled board meeting for Edgewood City Schools. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gabber?
Present.
Mrs. Ashcroft?
Present.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Present.
Mr. Pressler?
Here.
Mr. York?
Present.
Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and then rebate the statement?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For this evening's prayer, I'd like to begin with a few lines of a poem by Joe Davis entitled, "We Rise Higher Together." Life is better when we rise together. There are possibilities only realized together. We can climb on our own, but we'll climb ever higher when we're not climbing alone. Together, more can be done. Together, there's more to become. We shine brighter when we shine together. We rise higher when we raise others. Let us pray. Good and loving God, our divine source of light and wisdom, bless those gathered here this evening. We give thanks for the privilege and responsibility with which you have entrusted each of us to support, foster, and advance the education and intellectual development of children and young adults in our community. Send your creative spirit to guide and direct us as we seek to use the experiences, gifts, and insights you've given us for the advancement and well-being of our students and their families. Give board members, community leaders, parents and teachers a sense of tomorrow by which we plan for future. Give the confidence needed to discover and explore new possibilities. Give the wisdom needed to discern life's good and life's unjust. Remind us that together, more can be done. May we, our students, teachers, families, and community, shine brighter for our time together this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. This time, I'm gonna look for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. York, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcroft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Flashing carries five zero.
Next up, we have presentations. Mrs. Adams, would you like to start?
Yes, Mrs. Adams is finding her way to our presentation. I just want to commend her. She's a woman of many hats. As you're aware, we do not have a director of operations. She's been filling in with student service programs and safety programs. So, Leisha, we appreciate you presenting to us this evening and all the many things you're doing in the district.
I did not, I did not share about the others with you, so I don't know if you want to come down. Some of you might be able to see it. It's up to you. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes. Last year, when John was transitioning out, I started working with him on some of the safety initiatives that we've been working on at the district. Kelly came in and we started being in the district safety team, which is sort of regrouping a lot of these teams and things that we had in place. So we really started focusing on some of the safety stuff. So just wanted to give you guys a quick update on where we're at, some of the things we've done in the past, and sort of where we're headed in the future. Safety and school safety and security is one of those things that's constantly changing and there's always work to be done. So as we move forward, we're looking at what can we deal with and what can we handle right now? And then what does the future look like for us? So back in 2006, a lot of this stuff came from John and some of the people before me. John was incredibly passionate about safety and security and he did some fantastic work. But early on, 2006, that was before I was even in the district. So some of the things there was Project Protect. We used a lot of grant money to enhance the safety and security stuff that we were doing beyond just your fire, tornado, bomb threats, and environmental hazards, really focusing more on things like adding... We used grant funds to hire the first SRO, focusing on things like mental health. There was a school safety and security tax levy that was in like around 2018 that focused on a lot of mental health. So we were able to implement some of those programs that we see in the district now. We installed our first set of security cameras at the high school, which is currently EMS, as part of this Project Protect in those early to mid-2000 years. Enhanced emergency operations plans and reunification plans. There was a tremendous amount of work that was done with some grant money and a safety grant that John worked tirelessly on to make sure that those plans were up to date and in place. And we were moving forward with that. We placed emergency supply bags in all classrooms with various supplies and things that you would need in the case of a lockdown or a shelter-in-place type situation. And again, we implemented some of those building and district safety teams to drive the work that the district was doing. So currently, we've got 345 security cameras throughout the district in all of our buildings. They operate 24/7. We put a significant, significant effort into ensuring that all interior and exterior doors are locked. We work, again, tirelessly to make sure that no doors are being propped open for my coaches, for practices, during PE classes, things like that. We use a visitor identification program in all of our buildings. The high school uses a program called SWIPE. All the other buildings use Raptor to scan your ID before visitors are allowed into the buildings. Our emergency operation plans are approved through the Ohio Department of Education and Ohio Homeland Security. We also have those available through Navigate, which is our, with an app, that houses all of our plans and all of our drill information. We have flip charts for what to do in the event of all of these incidences. Navigate houses all of that information. There's handheld radios, emergency radios, available to all administrators and additional staff in all the buildings. We have an incident response system installed in each building. We have SROs located in each building. We, according to state mandates, we use a State Safe Speak Up hotline that's available 24/7 for staff, students, and parents. We complete our minimum requirements of 14 safety drills throughout the year. Those are fire, tornado, a combination of some functional drills, active intruder drills, things like that. And then our Butler County Emergency Agencies have performed district-wide functional drills, tabletop drills, and safety assessments in all of our buildings. So moving forward, and last year, as I kind of transitioned into this role, we completed with the team, Kelly was part of that, Dr. Thor was part of that, vulnerability walks in all of our buildings. And we used that data to apply for grant funding and drive future projects. So as we worked in the buildings, we walked around with the SROs, building principals to identify vulnerable areas or maybe blind spots for cameras or doors that weren't closing properly, things like that. And then using some of that data, collecting that data to identify, are these things that we can fix on our own that maintenance needs to address or things that we need to allocate grant funding for? We've done inventory of all of our emergency bags in all of our classrooms, so we're gonna look at getting all of the supplies and things needed to update those. Things like water bottles that might be expired, things like that. We're making sure that those are all in place. Continuing our work with Butler County Sheriff's Office and our SROs, but also for first responders, we have given access, SWIPE badges, to our Butler County sheriffs, not only our school resource officers, but the ones that patrol in this area overnight, and making sure that all of our first responders would have access to the building in the event that they would need it. Our tech department and maintenance department has worked really hard with Cincinnati Alarm. It's been a challenging process. I think it's still a work in progress. Zach's been really on top of this, making sure that we verify our alarm zones in the buildings and creating maps to identify if there's, if an alarm goes off, where's it coming from? What sensor triggered it or what door? And it's, that's been a process. We've added two alarms to exterior doors, an EECC for student safety. We have our reunification MOUs assigned and in place for the '23, '24 school year. That is with Seven Mile Presbyterian, Trenton First Baptist, and the Butler County Fairgrounds. So in the event that there's a situation where we have to move off-site, that we can't be at the field, fill our field or in one of our buildings, we have reunification MOUs in place with those churches and locations that we could go to if we needed to. And what we're gonna be implementing this year is looking at, as our buildings do their safety drills, working through a debriefing process after that to identify what went well, what do we need to fix, what are some things that, you know, we need to look at in the future. Future goals and things moving forward. We are partnering with Butler County ESC. Katherine Clayton is the Director of Public School Safety. And our first responders to plan and execute both a tabletop and a full-scale safety drill within the school year. So our tabletop drill is scheduled for August 8th. That's a little bit of a simulation discussion base. Katherine Clayton will come in. We're gonna focus that drill on active intruders and really just an opportunity for administrators, front office staff, maintenance, first responders to really discuss, you know, what that could look like and how do we make sure that we are as prepared as we possibly could be. We have a full-scale drill planned for March. That's what we're looking at, to focus on reunification, more of a full-scale, actually moving people and having, you know, some volunteers from the community come in. In the event that there's a situation where we have students that need to be picked up, what does that look like? How are we using our staff? What does traffic flow look like and that type of stuff to make sure we're all prepared for those things? There's been some discussion about safety film. We have received quotes for safety film application. Two separate quotes, one on main entrances only, and then we, I also got a quote for all door entrances for all buildings in the district. Grant funds will be applied for that. That is a project that we are looking to start soon. I think there's some discussion about that on the agenda, yeah.
Is that what's on our agenda for tonight?
Yes.
That's the same thing?
Yes.
Yeah. So we're looking at that. That is, like I said, that's a project that we'd like to start very soon. We've received a couple of quotes for that, so hoping to move forward on that.
If approved tonight, they can actually start applying in July. And it's gonna take a few weeks, so we would love to have that project complete before school starts.
What's the capability of that? What's it actually, it doesn't really say, what was it actually do?
So there's, there's of course different levels. The, what most schools, in the research that I've done and talking to other business managers, most schools are going with what they call like a seven mil safety film. And there's some videos that I can share that essentially what it does is it prevents, they're not bulletproof, they are shatterproof and they are... So if somebody were to throw a brick at it or you could shoot through it, but the glass is not gonna shatter. It takes, on average, depending on the type of film, there's anywhere from three minutes to 10 minutes before you could break through a big enough hole that somebody could actually get inside the window. So it holds the whole glass pane in place so that you can't get in. So it's essentially prolonging the amount of time that you would have for a first responder to get there before you can get inside the building.
And typically, on a national level, it's been a while since I've heard this. Tom, you may know better, but the last time I was in the business, the national average is about seven to 10 minutes, but in rural districts, we're like 14 to 15 minutes response time from police. So you wanna buy as much time as possible.
Curtis knows, he's an expert on this stuff too, because he did a lot of research on it when he had the shooting in Madison. I don't know, Curtis, anything you wanna add?
We, we put it on all our classroom doors, because every classroom door has been moved. We had put it on our entrances. Again, it was because after our incident, our kids all said that they felt safe locked down. They were in circulate class on the classroom doors in lockdown. So we literally bought the material and installed it ourselves. We hired some students, hired adult students. And we bought the material, we took the door frames off, the wood doors, they had nice big, thick wooden frames, removed the glass, slapped the dome on both sides, reinstalled the trim, put the trim on the inside of the door, had a few screws. So literally, I took a piece of plate glass that we took out and tried to break into it. I couldn't shatter it. I mean, I could bust the glass, but I couldn't get through the frame. And the classroom, the glass has been filled since these doors. It's like tempered glass, it's real thick. Mine was just like 20 inches of glass and you could break it down. I couldn't get through that film. So it's really basic stuff. It's really good stuff, but I talked to Leisha about it a little bit. We didn't do our doors out front because there was no money for that at the time, even though we had a shoot. There was no money. We, you know, we had limited budget, so we did the best we could with what we had to do the exterior doors, because they're all like metal framing, very little frames. I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we did the best we could. It really was a nice improvement for, because not only for an intruder, think about a fight. Think about a kid gets shoved into a door. Just a safety improvement across, across all levels of your operation. So it was a nice, inexpensive improvement for the backs.
So when I reached out to the business managers, the overwhelming majority said that they, they either done their exterior doors or they planned to do their exterior doors. Very few had talked about doing interior doors. The issue is, it's not an issue, but one of the things like Curtis and I discussed, they took every single window out and some are going like, you can't take the window out. So there's a couple of different applications for the safety film. The one, like, the one company uses like a really specific caulk that goes around that holds it so that the whole window pane doesn't just come out when there's some sort of, you know, not glass, but that's the word that they use. The company that we're gonna go with is using, they use like, it's called Down 995. It's a glaze, like a specific glaze that they use to hold the window in place that attaches it to the frame for that same reason, so that the whole window pane doesn't just come out. So that, that's why this process took a little bit longer. We got a couple of different quotes and to go out and get people accurate measure. We, we took every door, we measured every, every window, every piece of glass. And we really talked about what is it, what areas are vulnerable and what is it that we want to secure and make sure that, that we're safe. So, you know, we worked through that process and I, we all agree that it's an important project to move forward on.
You wanna just reiterate, as we talk about being financially concerned in Edgewood, we're not using tax dollars for this. How are we paying for this?
So most safety and security expenses do come out of your general operating fund, which is the same fund that you use to educate kids and pay your employees and things like that, which is the reason that we've been really diligent about making sure that we apply for, for all these grants. We've been awarded a 20 general grant funding, some other safety grants, so upwards of $450,000. It's allocated for different projects and things as we rode up these grants. So some of the things that we would like to use those grant funds for is that safety film on all building entrances, updating those emergency bags, like I spoke about earlier. We've talked about the GPS system. Pam's been working really hard on some GPS systems on buses to increase and improve our safety and our tracking of our buses. Putting some additional, we've already put some additional and updated cameras in buildings to fix, like I said, blind spots and things like that, getting some additional handheld emergency radios. We had some dead spots in some of our buildings. Zach and Mr. Gigan and I have been working on how can we get new batteries and things like that to improve those handheld radios and fix some of those dead spots. And then looking at creating these secure control rooms. Every building should really have a secure room in the event of an emergency that, you know, a building principal could be in, sort of giving information as needed and things like that. The high school has a really nice home. Mr. Kussner did a really good job of getting that building put together, but the other buildings need something like that, so we are hoping to be able to use some grant funding to beef up some of their secure control rooms in the other buildings as well.
I got a question. What, what would be the purpose of taking the glass out?
So, so, so that glass, just imagine one big piece of glass. And if it's not gonna break, it's gonna stay together, the whole thing has to come out. The whole thing has to come out. All that's holding that glass is the frame, the actual trim or the frame. And we're talking classroom door glass, okay? The wood, doors are wooden trim. So we took the trim off the inside of the door, pulled a whole piece of, you know, tempered, I don't know, three eighths, half inch big safety glass, sure the other side's of it, put it back in, put the trim back on, instead of popping it back on with brand nails like it was installed with, we shot screws into it. So if somebody's on the outside trying to get in that classroom with a baseball bat, beating on it, you know, they're gonna break that glass, but the whole thing stays intact. The weak point is the frame that's holding that whole piece, a moved up piece of glass in. And that's why we took it all out. Because if we had, if we put the safety film over just the exposed part, it could just fall right out the part, it broke off under the trim. So that's why we took it off. And you know what? That's been, that's been how many years ago? 2016? There's a lot of technology.
They're not gonna take the glass out of all the...
No, so there's a couple of different options. So the first quote that I received from the company that we're hoping to work with, he was gonna apply the film and it would, it would do the job. I mean, it would, it would keep, it would keep somebody from being able to just get in through the window. It would prolong the, the amount of time that it takes and allow first responders to get there.
So that's kinda what the caulk and glaze is for around the edge?
Yeah, so the, the caulk and glaze around the edge is to do just that, to make sure that that weak point is sealed, so that, yeah, so the, it's sealed, so that the whole pane doesn't just come out.
I think the important, the important point is that it's gonna be a determinant and it's gonna give first responders time to get your better, better response. And they're, they're extremely quick anyway. And we have an SRO in the building. So when SRO here shooting or on outside of the schoolhouse, they're gonna come running. And so it gives them, and I think that, you know, the example that I thought about has been the Nashville shooting just a year ago or months ago. Had there been that, that person shot through that glass and walked right through the door.
Would've bought time, wouldn't it?
Yeah. And so I think it's important. I don't think, obviously, you can't put a money, a dollar figure on a child's life or a staff's person's life in these buildings. I think it's really neat that we have the opportunity to do this with a grant.
That's all I have. I wanted to just kinda give you guys an update on where we're at, what we're looking at moving forward, some of the projects that we've been working on. There's always work to be done, but we're working on it. If you guys have any questions, we're happy.
Yeah. What about all the glass over here in the cafeteria?
It's, it's, you know, this building, when I...
We're doing the doors, but not the windows?
We're doing the doors, but not the windows. That's, you know, when you look at this build, this whole building almost looks like it's made out of glass, you know? And we, we talked about, you know, some of these, some of these entrances, do you do the glass?
Yeah, there's another section.
Do you do the glass, you know, the first two levels, like panels of glass that you could actually, you know, kinda walk through? That's an option. I mean, we can do that.
So it sounds like we're gonna get started tonight with this, if it gets approved, get started with what we have, but why they're here, give us an extra quote for that? That's not a bad idea.
Is it reasonable, like, putting paint down on the window?
No.
That would be, exactly, yes. I mean, I wanna make sure it wasn't a bubble or anything. Car windows look like that, right?
Now, there is some, there is some curing time to it, which, you know, it's gonna be about a three to four week process. He'll come through and put the, the film on and then the glazing process has to happen. So there is, you know, we're gonna have it, if we can start first, second week of July, we'll be done before school starts, but there is a curing process. So to your point, there may be, while they're working on it, you may walk by and see some bubbling and things like that, but as that dries out, that will go away.
Yes.
This really isn't a district thing, but I just wanted to mention to you, if you don't know, I had a conversation with Dustin Gadd, he's a St. Clair Township trustee a week or so ago, and St. Clair Township is working on a grant to get Louisa Mark Road repaid. In my opinion, I think that's a safety thing too. I was gonna talk about it on stage, and since you're talking about this, I think that's something that maybe the district and St. Clair Township probably needs to stay in contact over. He asked for some things from us as a district to try to help get this grant through. We had to have that conversation, but just wanted to make you aware that there is a possibility of trying to get that done, because I think that is definitely a, a safety thing. And if you didn't know that, I wanna make sure that you did.
Please share our contacts and we can keep that conversation moving.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. When you're talking about updating the emergency bags, I know when we had that lockdown and kids were in for quite a while, we had teachers dismissing kids in the bathroom against rules. What are you looking at as far as emergency bags? Because I know, like, we have a way for them to go to the bathroom and they were in for...
So this, ours, right now, in my opinion, are bare essentials, right? It's toilet paper, water, there's some mince candy in there.
Duck tape.
Gloves, duck tape, batteries, flashlights, things like that. I went to a safety meeting in the spring and somebody presented from like the trauma center at Middletown, and they were talking about these and what other, Middletown, I think, received some grant money or some donations. And they have those like, 13 down buckets with like toy seats on them and things like that. There's, there's a lot that I'd like to do to kind of beef those up, for lack of a better term words, a little bit. Right now, we wanna make sure that we've got everything in there, that water bottles aren't expired and things like that. But with some of this grant funding, I'd like to look at some additional items that need to be in there for that reason.
But Amy, that would be like a real emergency. The lockdown was precautionary and in situations like that, the SRO will do like hallway patrol and like classes out and they're supervised breaks.
Yeah, but when you're actually in one, in a building when there's a lockdown like that, there's no, there's no reason for that to happen, because there, there always has been law enforcement people in the building that if like Mr. Johnson's classroom needs to go potty, you can ask a deputy or two to go there and ask them to arrest him.
On that date, there was none.
Well, there's, there's...
I was a teacher, that was my students telling me what their parents were doing and that was the only communication they had.
Yeah, that was, yeah. And we did talk about that and that was, Kelly and I talked about that. We know that in the event of something like that, myself, others need to report to those buildings for that reason, to be able to support kids' classrooms, things like that. It doesn't need to be in there for...
Another reason we need to do tabletop, so that we practice these things, so that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
But that's a thing of their time. Like an hour forty-five, we're now in the...
We've heard that. That's not good. That's why we need these drills.
But I agree. We think those, those could be enhanced and that's part of this process.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Are we good? Thank you. Good job.
I wanna thank you again for that. I mean, obviously, safety is of very high importance of everybody sitting up here. So thank you again.
Looks like we're gonna move on to treasure items. Mrs. Bowers, would you like to start?
Yes, I would like to ask for a motion to block items A and B, as the board meeting minutes for May twenty-second, and also-
Special meeting?
Yep, a special meeting, May twenty-
I'm gonna look for a motion to block A and B with special board minutes of May second and regular board minutes of May twenty-second. So Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft, Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Aye.
Motion case five zero. Next, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the financial reports as presented.
Looking for a motion to approve the financial reports as presented?
Send it.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. York? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please? Put that Mr. Messerschmidt.
That's both of you in a second.
Go ahead, that's all right.
We'll give it to Mr. Pressler.
You have to speak up, because they don't, I can't read your mind.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
I got a question. Do we go over participation? Do we have a poll?
We didn't have any, were we?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Good question.
The next agenda items, I would like to block items D, E, and F. And these are reports that go to the county to staff final appropriations temporary for fiscal twenty-four and advances in transfers.
I'm gonna look for a motion to approve D, E, and F as presented. So Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. York? Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is a maintenance contract with Johnson Controls.
I'm gonna look for a motion to approve a maintenance contract with Johnson Controls. So Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft, discussion?
Have we tabled this before?
Yeah, just tabled last month, it's huge.
I was making sure, I didn't do a document to see if it was like, anything, right? Okay.
So, so what's different? Maybe table it last month, what's different?
Just to have more time to review it, because it was like thirty-two pages.
Okay, so then nothing's changed?
No, no.
I think there was one that you carried that, didn't you?
Well, they brought it that day up, it was, it was late.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next, I would like to block items H and I. These are both Warren County ESC contracts, also tabled from last month.
Looking for a motion to approve the contracts for Warren County as presented. So Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Discussion. I thought we were discussing pulling some stuff off there.
We did. Can't, it's all IEP-driven. We pulled it to look if we could drive costs down. It is what it is. Can I give you physical therapy? Lindsay, did anything change on it?
No, we just separated those, so you could see, physical therapy is, before, that's all students in the district. We service approximately eighty-six students currently who receive physical therapy in the district, with six pending evaluations, like, come fall. So that's ninety total students, about PTs can service ten students per day. So that's nine days of physical therapy, same as what we had last year. We grouped it separately, so you could see that. The other quote is student-specific costs, and I did write up a little narrative that I think Patty could, maybe an executive, anybody could look at as well, that describes exactly what the services are. But they are tied to specific students for individual IEP needs, whether it's self-interested behaviors, that they require an interpreter to communicate, things like that. It is about a hundred thousand less from last year. I know it's a very hefty contract, it always is. We did also post PT, we had zero applicants, partly because it is such a high-demand position. And quite honestly, when they can go to ESCs, they can make no money. So most school districts are unable to hire their own internally.
So is there a company, transportation costs to this?
Transportation is separate from this. If we have to transport students from here to one of those locations-
So they send them here to do this? We don't send kids over there?
Both, both.
Yeah, we could, the student-specific costs, the interpreter comes here to our building, to the high school.
Yep.
The other, the other services there are for students who are placed out. And PT is the same, they service kids in the district in competition.
One other question about this that I, it didn't dawn on me until we walked away from the last meeting, we tabled last time. Why, why do we have to go to Warren County? We don't have the opportunity to do this.
Butler County, the only educational program Butler County has is Union Day. We do have one student at Union Day, I think that contract's on here tonight as well. It is more for behavioral challenges. Warren County has programs geared specifically towards students with autism, because they're called social communications, so they work on communicating learning PECs, or whatever it might be, communication devices.
It's what they specialize in. Just about every school district uses Warren County for that type of service, because they're the specialists in that area.
All four counties in our region use Warren County for this program, Butler County doesn't have the options.
Okay, thank you. And, I mean, just to add to that, I mean, a lot of this money is recoverable, so it's not a total, it's not, it's not a total burden on us financially.
Yes, these are the kids that we file excess cost on every year, and Patty and I looked at that with a fine tooth comb, but yes, that's a good point. The state does reimburse us for kids that cost a lot of money. All of these kids on this list would qualify for it.
So just, so I kinda have it in my head, I mean, we're talking half a million dollars here, how much of this do we think we recover?
Just from our cat costs that we just filed, and I can tell you, last year we got back a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in cat costs. This year, the cat costs we filed on, we got four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. We, we've really put a lot of time digging into this, making sure that we get it back. So while we filed, wound up, we got back forty-two, forty-three cents on the dollar. You're not gonna get it all, though. I'm very proud to work that we have put into both excess cost and cat cost this year. It's huge, with more than double.
There's districts that don't put in this, the amount of time that I've seen put into this, and it paid off.
Good job, thank you.
That makes me feel better.
Yeah.
And we almost get half of it back.
It's, it's been, it's been a condition that we in Butler County have been in for a long, long time. Either it was Hamilton County or Warren County you had to go to for special services. I don't, I don't know why Butler County chooses not to go this direction.
We've had a conversation about that at director's meetings. We have this monthly with directors in our county, and they talked about that. We wanted to start our own program, there's a need for it, because all of it's not just Edgewood we're looking, all of our districts are really struggling with. We have some of these students that, quite honestly, just wouldn't be safe in our buildings because of their level of need, of the medical care, or whatever it might be. The problem is startup of that is just very expensive. There's expensive training to work with some of these students, having a building, having an administrator available. And they talked about could, could we do it with people volunteer? We had a whole team that, that looked at this. But it requires a district, like Edgewood, for example, say, yeah, we'll use a room in our building, our administrators, but then we're absorbing, you know, eight really high need students, and you still have to pay for the spot, right? So it's just really hard to get a location and somebody that's willing to kind of step up and do that.
Some awesome charter school opportunities, if you know someone in the business. Money to be made. Yes.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next, I would like to block items J, K, and L. These are all Butler County ESC contracts.
Looking for a motion to, for J, K, and L for Butler County Educational Services.
Send it.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? Discussion.
I'm not familiar enough with these things. Is there anything different in these than what we've normally done? Pretty standard.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
That motion carries five zero. Next, I would like to ask for a motion to approve a contract with Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center. This is for nursing needs.
Looking for a motion to approve the contract with Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center. So Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead. Mrs. Ashcraft? This is new to me.
This is private nursing for one of our students who is in preschool. She'll be the kindergarten next year. She's, we're fortunate enough that we're able to contract with a couple of nursing providers to allow students who have their home care nurses to also come to school with them, which provides consistency of care, which is incredibly important for parents of students with medical disability. So this is for one student, like I said, she's had this nursing, and she started with us in preschool, but she's been working great.
She's often with her medical falls, I think.
Is there any, recouping any of this money?
Again, excess, we have something costs, yes.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next agenda item is a motion for Applied Behavior Services Contract.
I'm gonna look for a motion for Applied Behavior Services Contract.
Send it.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Discussion?
Yeah, this, this is the same dollar amount as the other A. Is that just a coincidence, or? If you look, and when we looked at the first, maybe it's J. Seventy-seven thousand oh point one eighty-six, it's the same number, dollar amount as Butler County.
This is for ABAS.
It's another placement for students with autism.
Talking about Ken, right? Coincidentally, it's, huh?
Please have that number in.
Maybe I-
This is, it's a monthly fee out of the latest.
So letter N, and you can look, I, I put this down in executive, because these are actual contracts, and there's personally identifiable information in there for these four students that go out. So I put that down, just to protect the names of our students.
Yep.
They do attend school year-round. There, there's a monthly rate in there, what it costs for these four students, but they are year-round.
Okay, good.
This one was also negotiated and got down as well. Came in higher, but we're seeing most of these places are increasing, but Mrs. White was able to work with them and get them to come down a little on their cost as well.
Are we able to recover any of this?
Same thing, all of these are IEP-driven, so we try to file excess or cat costs on all of them.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next, I'd like a motion to approve a gifted coaching services contract.
Looking for a motion to approve a twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three gifted coaching service contract.
Oh, yes, which I actually-
Looks like. Something we just didn't get in last, okay? Looking for a motion.
Send it.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Any discussion on this?
What, can you explain what this is?
Um, I actually got an invoice for this, I didn't know it was happening, but it did. We do have grant funds to pay for it, but it is coaching for our gifted coordinator in the district. They worked with her for ten days this past school year. So we just, I just got a bill for it last month, or last week, when I put it on, so, but we do have funds set aside and a grant to pay for it.
Are these funds for a-
The current school year, was actually, what's going on right now?
We're not doing that again next year, correct?
No. I just, I, we know that she got the coaching, so I, I don't wanna do the, I, I believe that should have been approved last year, and it wasn't. But we did utilize those services and-
Who does the evaluation for this person? Because it says in the contract that we have to do the official evaluation.
Who works directly with the gifted coach?
The gifted coach? She's from Montgomery County ESC.
But who, who schedules her and Megan?
Megan Rose, who receives the services, and Scott is-
Says the board agrees, I'm assuming that's us, right? Board agrees that it shall be responsible for conducting evaluations of Montgomery County ESC personnel assigned to the district as required by revised code, some, some, some-
Basically, you're evaluating your, your professional development. You know how you do your surveys at the end, and that's all that is.
Okay, so, okay. Conducting evaluations of Montgomery County ESC personnel assigned to the district. We're not doing the evaluations, but somebody dares do those evaluations. Do they have time for that, I guess?
It's basically, you know how you go to a conference and you evaluate your session? That's all that is.
That is.
So our gifted coordinator schedules the training, and then our staff decides if she was coming back.
Okay, I understand.
When, when did this training take place?
It's taken place throughout the school year.
Ten days of coaching.
Oh, it's not ten consecutive, it's like-
No, no.
As needed. So what Patty's saying is, when we secured it, we should have brought it forth. What happened is, we have the money and a grant, the bill was invoiced after the ten days were provided throughout the year, which is very typical, you provide your invoice after service.
I always get the impression that this happened, like, early in the school year, and we're just not-
Throughout the whole entire school.
I, I got you. Any more discussion? Are we doing this again this year?
I don't believe so. Is she coaching?
It's my understanding that they're, I think it's already been approved, actually, that they were added on.
That was part of the Butler County contracts that were approved with coaching days last month.
So we produce the number of days that we should.
By half, except for, pardon me? Why does she need coach? Our teachers that teach gifted is basically a professional development. We bring in a coach that comes in and works in the classroom.
That's a professional development.
Yes, correct. And Butler County pays for half of it.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call roll please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, next I would like to block two curriculum items. Uh, it's item P and Q. It's Go Party and Software and then Amplify Curriculum, which is workbooks to go, um, with the curriculum we recently purchased.
I'm looking for a motion to approve P and Q, which is a curriculum threat. So, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Big ticket items. I don't know that I understand what this Go Party means.
The name is deceiving, isn't it? It's a, like a parent company name for a product called Edulastic. We are.
Part of a what?
It's called Edulastic. And we're asking more and more of our teachers to be able to do, um, common assessments and to ask questions that are the level of rigor of state testing that align with state standards. So this product, and it's been around for a while, but it's finally tweaked to a, a very refined product. So we've used it in pockets over the years while I first came to Edgewood. Had a couple of teachers in use it, but the product is very much improved. It aligns with the standards and has a bank of rigorous questions that align with the state testing questions. So we're not gonna ask the teacher to sit there and make up fifteen questions for a standardized assessment within their classroom or common assessment. They're able to pull from this bank specifically to the needs of what they're teaching in the classroom, what the content areas are. They can give any length, so they can do benchmarks. They can just do according to what it is that's obvious that they're teaching at that time. So it's something we're providing grades three through twelve, um, all content areas. They, they really don't have an interest or a need for that right now. We've had discussions with E C C and E S and they don't feel like that's something they need. They're still gonna work with like their divvles, um, G I S will continue to do, but also their curriculum based assessments.
Has he brought teachers in to see this and look at this and?
Teachers have used it. He's met with principals. He didn't make, this was brought to him as a request.
Okay.
And so they reached out. I know EMS was looking into it, D H S was looking into it, D I S was looking into it. Um, he just didn't want to exclude buildings that unless they wanted to.
And generally the teachers want this, right?
Yes. Now, I don't, I know that some teachers have used it. I don't know that they petitioned all teachers to see whether or not that.
There may be some that don't, but as we really are looking at a focus of student learning, some of the principals are saying it will help drive how they assess student learning on a quarterly basis.
It could be a ripple of one of those unfunded mandates that we, uh.
And let's just remind the board, we made enough cuts to put X amount of dollars into curriculum adoption budget. This is coming out of that curriculum budget.
And I'm fine with that. I just wanna make sure that we're buying something that the teacher want.
They may not, but it's something as we talk about student learning, how to measure it, principals feel that, um, I believe Lori Harrison has used it all year, loved it, and other principals have listened to that conversation, and they would like to use it to make the assessments that are going to be asked to, um, to be looked at on a quarterly basis and make it an easier way for the staff.
And are there other options, other brands, other types, other?
They could always create a common assessment of their own.
But I guess I wanna ask if there are other companies that offer.
There are, but this is one that's heavily used in the market.
Okay, and that, that's what I was.
Yes. Tom, I think you guys used the Towanda years ago.
Yeah.
Now again, some teachers aren't gonna like it, cause you're asking them to measure consistently the standards, but it's something that should make life easier upon that request.
And that's the key to getting better. Um, so, yeah, I think that's important.
Is there, I mean, have we held off on getting this for a reason? Was it because of afforded? Was it?
We've never had a curriculum adoption budget. Trying to be as professional as possible here, Mr. Messerschmidt.
Just wanted to make sure. Make sure I understood, got it. Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, do you call roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
That motion also carries five zero. The next agenda item is an I three education contract, better known as pay schools.
Did you say they were fired?
Do you want to talk about that or do they know?
Oh, we grouped it.
Yeah, we blocked those.
Do they know what pay schools is?
Come on along.
Um, yeah, that's, I'm looking for a motion for pay schools.
So, ma'am.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second? Second. Mr. Pressler?
Okay, now I'm gonna call on my friend Zach Cantor out here for help with this. So currently we use a system better known as Easy Pay. A lot of you used it. Um, this is kind of going away. They're not, um, serving in the capacity that they used to. Pay schools is the new Easy Pay. Um, we're looking to get this in the cafeterias, um, terminals and the cafeterias are outdated. Um.
So we needed to update them anyway, and also this was a recommendation that came from Butler County through some of the cafeteria audit conversations we've had up to this point. Does the money wanna transfer over from Easy Pay?
Mr. Cantor?
Well, that is the.
Can you help us with the transition from Easy Pay to pay schools? What that looks like?
Uh, well, we haven't had like formal meetings, cause we haven't like signed the document to have those meetings. I'm, are you saying like parents that already have money in Easy Pay, will they transfer over to pay schools? I, I, I'm assuming they will, but I don't know that.
How old is my eleven dollars? No, eleven dollar, correct. I, we were, we attended a very brief training back in May, I would say, and they did say that all the people brought in trained in August, and that there is a transition of funding from Easy Pay into pay schools, pay schools. And evidently, I don't understand how the systems talk to each other, but it's very easy for that transaction to happen. I know enough to be dangerous on the topic.
So is this sixteen hundred dollars a month? Is this sixteen hundred for the year?
For the system. Sixteen hundred a month, but how much is it for the system? Ten thousand?
Um, I don't know.
There's a, there's a rate for the system and then a monthly cost as well.
One thing with this though, they come in and they keep the, the equipment up to date. So like every four years is it's that, we get new terminals in the cafeteria and they manage all of that movements as well.
But it's replacing something that.
It's replacing our current system.
So how much are we paying for?
We're gonna get new controls for all that. How much do we pay for Easy Pay right now?
I don't know. I'm gonna talk to my head. I'll have to look it up.
You have to add an Easy Pay annual plus, since it's gonna replace that.
Yes. So this is one system replacing two.
Going to sale and then also the, the payment system.
And like, I'm looking at like these, these processing fees, credit card, four and a half percent, electronic check, dollar ninety-five, that seems kinda odd.
We have, we have that now. You go in and make payments on Easy Pay. We even do it here at the school. People come in, I mean, we don't absorb that, that fee anymore. If they come in to do E C I background check or whatever, there's a fee for them if they wanna use the credit card. We don't absorb that as a school.
Like we go to your E T M and get your own money out and.
Also, so these fees will be tacked on. So like if someone came in and bought a lunch for four dollars, they don't take a dollar seventy-five from it, add it on to the, to the.
So like Amy was saying, she goes in and drops money on her kid's lunch account, there is a fee for her to do that. Same thing with this. If parents go through school pay or pay schools that load money, there's a fee for doing that.
Every time you load it, there's a fee. So you're better off loading a larger amount, paying one fee than paying it every week.
Come a long way since that cash box when I was in the middle of school.
Correct. The milk money?
Yes.
Does cash, is there an option?
Yes. My husband asks that question all the time, but yes, it is.
Well, at least they'll take checks, right?
Yes. Cause it says over fifty dollars is four and a half percent. That's huge.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call roll please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next agenda item is a maintenance and grounds contract. Uh, this is the bill that Mr. Thomas paid out before he left.
Looking for a motion to approve the maintenance and grounds contract. So move.
Oh, I had that blocked. I'm sorry. S and T are blocked. So it's a, a maintenance and grounds contract and then also what that is playground mulch.
Also with the playground mulch included, blocked together. Mr. York, do I have a second?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Discussion?
You know, playground mulch may seem to the public as being something that they, I can't even afford to buy that from a house, but it is part of safety for the kids to be on the playground. At one point, it was required by law, correct, uh, to have certain.
And it's rubber, shredded rubber versus like ground mulch.
So it's something that we have to do, uh, for six of the kids.
We do it every year?
Yep.
Any more discussion?
At least I tell my wife we can't afford mulch.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call roll please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Um, the next agenda item is the quote for window film.
Looking for a motion to approve the quote for the window film as presented.
So, ma'am.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second? A second. Mr. Messerschmidt? Think we've kinda touched on this a little bit earlier?
Could we, have we asked, uh, to see other jobs they've done?
Yeah, I, he, they are working.
I, I don't want to, but maybe it'd be good to go look at to see if what they do is good.
So he has done the, um, tinting for the traffic police department, the building. Um, it's not this safety film, but he did tinting on their windows. They are working on some safety film projects in Fairborn right now. Um, they've done a lot of like banks, credit unions, um, some city buildings, things like that. There's, there's essentially only a couple of companies that can install the product. Um, Three M makes a product and then the manufacturer of the Three M product also manufactures it for other installers, um, which makes it significantly cheaper, um, to do it that way. So I have discussed that, but I have not gone to see them. Um, but he has worked with other school districts and.
I think it's kinda, it's neat that this is a local company. I mean, these guys are in Hamilton and.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, I would, uh, I would still be interested in getting some pricing around some of these other big areas that we have a lot of class.
Yeah.
Um, Mrs. Bowers, do you call real quick? But just, are we approving the, are we approving all of this money on here? There's about seventy thousand on your balance sheet. So total.
Yeah, I don't know. It's, he, he didn't total it on here.
I think about seventy.
It's about seventy five.
Seventy five dollars. So, and you, you get the grants for all this?
Yes, sir. It's way less than I thought. We have four hundred fifty thousand in red dollars. So this will take up some of seventy thousand of the four hundred fifty.
Yeah, I would like to see pricing on some of their stuff, especially at the high school and stuff. That's, there's a lot of class.
I mean, right out here even, this whole hallway.
Yeah, and, and if it, if this does what it sounds like it does, I mean, I, now what you plan on doing to remaining three, what at three hundred thousand plus.
Well, they were doing GPS. She gave me that list on the PowerPoint. The GPS on the buses was another one. That's gonna be a pretty high ticketed item.
If I understand what Gary, if I think I understand where Gary's going with this, I mean, I think there's probably plenty of opportunity, a lot more if we got the.
There were some questions about like in the front of this building with the, the doctor's office is all my house right there. Um, that operates kind of as a separate entity, but it's still our building and you can still get in. So, and then the front of our main office is also glass. Um, so to your point, yes, those are additional areas that we did not include in this initial quote. Um, and the other thing too to mention is what you might notice is we just, we've done, a lot of our buildings have that double entrance and that first front door stays unlocked so that parents can get in and hit the button and talk that way. So we've, we've measured and we plan to put the safety dome on that second set of interior doors. So not that are first one, people walk right into those. It's the ones that are gonna lead into the building.
Makes sense.
So those are the ones that we.
So let's, as, as per your request, we'll bring in that additional quote, but we're not gonna let that stop the work starting.
No.
Okay.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call roll please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is the, uh, property liability and cyber insurance.
Looking for a motion for the property liability and cyber insurance. So, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. York, any discussion? Mrs. Bowers, do you call roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next agenda item is a motion to approve a new fund.
Looking for a motion to approve the new fund from Casey's Channel. So move, second. Mr. Messerschmidt, Mr. York, any discussion? Is this bringing more money?
This is actually a grant. Yeah, no, Colgate got this. Um, we brought it to kind of work last month. We just need to set up this fund for him to be able to utilize the, the money's for the equipment.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, do you call roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is a resolution to sell a vehicle from our transportation fee.
Looking for a motion to sell a vehicle from our transportation.
This is a van.
Yes. Mr. York, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? You say this is a van?
Yes.
That we no longer need or use?
It's junk and doesn't run and it's taking up space and we want it off our insurance.
So we're gonna do this, scrap it or?
Did he say, we are, we have someone who is interested in this van, so I think the price would probably be higher than this.
Sit out in the field and charge people ten bucks to hit it with a hammer.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call roll please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Um, next I would like to block my final three items, Y, C, and double pay, and these are all donations.
I'm gonna look for a motion to approve three separate donations.
So, ma'am.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. York?
I give, I, but Mr. Messerschmidt, I gave that second there.
Any discussion? Very, very nice that these people have donated this money. I guess about forty-five hundred dollars from Thomas donors, local business and churches. Very nice that they do that.
And we got something from Miami. I saw that in the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
See what are going in the jar?
Yeah.
No. We're placing wireless in, uh, middle school and all of our elementary.
It's with Miami Partnership.
That's right.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call roll please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes. Where'd we finish up on outstanding lunch balances at the end of the year?
I thought we paid all of the, the many, do you know Alicia, where our final dollar was on outstanding lunches? I think it was less than five, six thousand. Do you know?
I don't know. I can remember, I forget it.
It was, it was, put it this way, the last time I checked, it was less than eleven thousand, but I know it paid down even more from some of the.
It was probably just around seven. We go around forty at one time.
Fifty, fifty-two, yep.
Good job with that.
Yes. Yes.
Absolutely.
I was trying to see if I knew what that balance was here, okay.
Second, are you still, are you guys still installing those wireless access points or?
We've got, every building does, but it's a little challenging.
Awesome.
I don't see it on here. I'll look when I get back. Um, the last thing, the, um, treasure informational items. Uh, I did share some information with each of you, uh, about the audits, um, with food service. Obviously, we know we have some work to do there. One of the recommendations that was made was increasing our student lunch charges. Not sure if that's something that you have an appetite for, but I, I would like for you just to take that information that was shared and, um, read over it and then if it's something you would have an appetite for, let us know so we could look at that maybe next month before school is up and running.
What are you, what are you asking of us?
If, if you would have an appetite to increase student lunch cost, I don't think they're talking.
Can we just do that?
We did not. We went to four oh five from three sixty for adult lunch prices. Um, but one of the recommendations, and she said we're not going to raise it enough to get, to get this under control here. I just, I don't know.
Is that part of our problem? We're not charging enough?
Yes, if it's a hundred and forty, like forty percent, so the cost should be about forty percent of what you're charging. So, uh, you would multiply it by like two point five to come up with a reasonable price for that.
I just, I don't know if you have enough.
Which comes up to what?
That's how, that's how you would cover it to where we would, I mean, we couldn't do it on all items as from the way it sounds.
Correct. Just the main meal.
Yeah, kind of, and then kind of reevaluate what we serve based on what cost us the most money. So if we're losing money on a certain item, we're not going to offer it as frequently as what we do now. So we're going to kind of do a better job of planning out exactly what it is we're going to serve to our students based off of, you know, cost.
Food cost.
Food cost.
So basically, they're saying twenty-five cents on every dollar. So you're looking at significant increase.
Yeah, I don't.
I, I don't know if you would.
I, I'm, I'm not, I wouldn't support that.
I would increase something up right now. What, what if we just basically said, as, as we complete this audit, we'll take that into evaluation? So part of our end of the year report would include what we should be charging and what we shouldn't be serving and how we can say. So it's a fluid recommendation. Well, I, I mean, in my opinion, I think we throw a lot of food away. And so, you know, passing on our food costs to families is not really where it's at. I think it's making sure that we're fixing them right now.
That was, that was part of it.
Yeah.
Was part of it was over ordering and making sure that we have a better idea of what we have in inventory and stuff like that. So, I mean, from the way it sounded through the report, there was multiple things that we could work on or fix, but.
That will drag that cost down. And I don't know if it's still like this, but I know that not too awfully long ago, we had another different president, he had a wife. Um, she, you know, had this whole thing and like kids would go through and in order to get lunch price, they had to get all this food. And it was like lima beans or whatever, and you had to, you like, you'd watch them walk past through the lima beans and trash. So, I mean, I think if we need to evaluate like how we're pricing lunch and how we're handing out lunch, then that may be something that would be beneficial. Cause, uh, you know, a lot of that.
I would still throw my lima beans in the trash.
I just use lima beans for example.
I haven't, I haven't had to fight for it, but I mean, I, I'm not saying we do it all once, but I think it's something that we gradually work towards. Cause right now, I think we're almost at a two hundred thousand dollar deficit that, and, I mean.
Does that carry over from COVID, the losses we had COVID?
Probably half of that is.
I said, I.
Was it?
Uh, yeah, and that's, I don't think we should pass that, that loss.
I don't think we should keep, carry that over, should we?
So there are two different carryovers. Um, there was one from years back. We'll tell you what that amount, it's like two hundred.
No, 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 it was two.
No. That one. That one was a hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight thirty. And it was actually more than that. So what happened was all of these lunch charges got dumped over in a separate O nine account. As people have come in for graduation, for example, those old fees and they had to pay their fees to graduate. This has come down. It, it was like two fifty, so it's come down. The problem we're running into here with this old amount in this account, um, this started back in, in fourteen when all this was moved over. Those kids are trickling out of the system. Eventually, we're not going to collect that amount. So if I go back to the, um, two oh oh six accounts, uh, that's negative two hundred and thirty thousand. Part of that's going to be a carryover from last year. So what, and you'll see this with these transfer, advances and transfers. We can't close out this fiscal year in the negative. General fund, we'll have to move that money over, cover that, and then we'll push it right back to the general fund when we open up FY twenty-four.
So can we, as a part of, I mean, we're, we're not even into next year. Can we just plan progressively to pull a little bit of money off to the side so when we get to the end of next school year, we, we just pay this off and we stop moving that money from one year to the next?
I would love to do that. I would love that that's, that's a chunk of money.
I know, and it's money that we've accumulated for almost ten years.
If we think we're not going to get it.
Well, let's just stop moving money around. Let's just get this, well, part of the, part of the problem too, or part of the audit is, uh, they're going to reevaluate things on a month-to-month basis. Uh, once school starts, so like we're making little changes gradually and then see how that's working. We don't have to go all gun have it right off the bat, so.
Yeah.
Or, uh, have a good idea on how many kids, uh, should be on free or reduced lunches and have applied for that. Also, I think is worthy to take.
I anticipate that number to go up, especially now they're having to pay these big amounts for pay to participate. Then I, I look for free lunch count to go up. I think more people will apply.
It'd be great if people are qualified to do that.
Yeah.
And, and the way to do that is about as anonymous as you can get, so it's not a stigma. And the kids don't have to be identified when they go through the line. I mean, the kids behind them definitely won't know.
Correct.
Uh, so as long as people, I think, know that, it should be easier for them to be able to do it.
Yeah. I have a lot of confidence in this lady that we're working with. She works with a lot of school districts around here. I mean, when I started asking people, who do you work with? They said, go to her, go to her. She, she's been phenomenal. I mean, I, I think we're heading in the right direction now.
All right, I think we'll just kind of stay on top of that. Thank you, Mrs. Bowers. Mrs. Spivey.
Yes, in the interest of time, I'd like to propose that we block superintendent items A, C, and D.
Looking for a motion to block, for approval of blocking A, C, and D. So moved, you put a, should have put D.
Thank you. I wasn't drawing that out.
But I'm just going to.
You're exactly right.
Mr. York, do I have a second?
Yes, you do.
Second. Mr. Pressler? Any discussion?
This Coomer field rate.
Yes.
We have a different rate. I, I know we, we've had other.
So basically what this is, are we okay to talk about it now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, we went through what our usage agreements were and we updated all the fees for them and used some comparisons of other districts. So you will see an increase, I believe it was a hundred and fifty before, and we bumped that up to two hundred without lights. We've increased the auditorium usage as well as our hourly rates, uh, for specialists. And what we found is that what we were charging wasn't even, it was costing, it was coming off the district funding versus covering itself.
So I'm not talking about like Edgewood, Pee Wee, you know, Pee Wee program. I'm talking about like with Peyton uses our.
Right, right. Why is X out? Is there a reason? Why is what X out? The, it says the fees and rates? Because if we've updated the usage form, which you will see in there as well, that has all the fees and rates listed on the back page.
Oh, cause it says two hundred is required, that's why.
Right. But that's X out, so I thought that was wrong.
That still seems too cheap to me.
I need to double check with, um, well, I'll tell you, that's what we've been charging, but I'm not so sure that's what we've been charging for football, which doesn't make sense. So I need to double check with the athletic director. But I was asking Patty, uh, prior to this meeting, is that, does that seem like a fluid wash of the cost? We need to do a better job of really understanding what do the lights cost when we turn that on? Right now, we're hearing rumors of what it costs, but I need to see that in a bill.
Oh, I don't think we should be charging it what it costs. I think that we should be making money on that. And especially, I don't, I'm not saying we should do that to the Pee Wee, you know, here.
Mm-hmm.
The Edgewood School District, I'm saying, but like with Peyton comes in and uses our field, we should be making some money on this.
It doesn't look like we are. You're saying more, more so to outside?
Yes.
Outside community. So what are we increasing it to? I don't have all the costs in front of me. If you go to the, the backside of hourly rates for employees as well as room usage and charges, field usage, equipment charges. You'd have to go through every document that actually spells out what has been increased. But I will tell you, there's been some things that, like for instance, when a custodian's been used, we took our higher rate pay, hourly pay for a custodian and charged it across the board. Because depending on what building and what custodian, there's times that costs us money. Now, as far as field usage, the field did not increase, but the auditorium and sound equipment did increase. So it just depends on some of the items.
So like.
And that was in comparison to neighboring districts.
So there, there's a PDF in there. It's under superintendent items on that second page. It shows what it is, but it basically says five hundred dollars for an hour for Coomer Field on Friday night under the lights. And we've got Peyton and Armin doing, we're, we're basically charging, I don't know what, two thousand dollars for the.
Eighteen hundred?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just don't think that's enough. I mean, really, we need to think about what it's costing us and the wear and tear and all that is.
Well, I think, I think even Pee Wee, they pay ten thousand dollars a year and that's for five home games.
Whoa, how many Pee Wee teams go there?
You're right, that's a small game. But, and that's no more than they've ever paid.
Well, I mean, I, I agree with Mark because we're, you know, we pay for that field turf. The more that we're on it, the more wear and tear, the more maintenance we have to have, the quicker we have to. So do you see that with the softball field, baseball field as well, or just Coomer? Do you think that should be two thousand for a flat rate?
Co- Coomer because of the, the turf and the other stuff. Baseball, you know, that isn't really, well, maybe gyms would have that.
I think for sure. They'll damage them dirt fields and you're really getting into some expense to replace that stuff.
Do we have people use our softball always walking through?
I think we do so.
Well, we had someone ask, I.
They someone asked, I didn't know if we'd ever done that.
I think we need to do a better job of like, uh, providing our youth programs to be, utilize our facilities more than like, especially outside where it don't cost us money. I know it, it might put some wear and tear on the fields, but I think we need to do a better job of, you know, bringing the community together as far as with the district. I think that would help go a long way, especially when it comes to, you know, going to your community and asking for money.
I, I agree with that. You know, you talk about the Pee Wee night and all that kind of stuff. I think, I think we can do a better job in, in a lot of that stuff. Well, looking at these contracts, they're all, they was all adopted in two thousand eighteen. So.
So we're looking to go to one facility use form, put it on our, our ML, um, program. And we were looking to increase the rate so it covers. But what I'm hearing through discussion tonight is double look at field usage. Don't, don't compare to neighboring districts compared to what we think it's worth.
Yeah, I'm always saying to other districts that's going to commit and use our, our facilities. I'm not saying Pee Wee, I'm not saying.
I hear you. Out, you're seeing outside community, and that's what this is for. And that's what this is for. Okay. Technically, we don't have to have this board approved. I just wanted to bring it forth to you so you saw where it was headed. And this is the conversation. So I'll go back and, and I'll fill you in through a weekly update of what that price may increase to.
Cause if we're in a tear on our track when they use.
Absolutely, there is. And then as far as the usage forms, they're, they're just guidelines. Again, we don't need your board approval on that, but I just want to give you an idea of what that change may look like, releasing that to me a little, okay?
Any more discussion? Mrs. Star?
Well, yeah.
Sorry.
Cause the handbook's right here.
Yes.
Um, I have a question on the secondary handbook. What are you having about participation fees?
Yes.
What is the difference in, hold on, let me pull up that. So we have like orchestra is one amount, but our two land is a different amount. We took, basically what we did is from this year's activity fee, some people pay twenty-five dollars for their activity fee. Other people pay fifty. And so if they were the lesser amount, we took them to the one fifty charge. If they were the bigger amount, then we moved them up to the five hundred.
So Corleone is just paying one fifty, right? It says, yeah, it says, um.
Then the handbook's wrong, so let me double check. Hang on, let me pull up this document.
It says drama choir and the bearish terms or whatever. I can't remember now.
The, the middle school is one fifty, the Corleones is five hundred. And you think that says that in the handbook?
Well, just let me look. I'm trying to get there. It's very long. The other thing, um, the other thing is.
Lisa, will you go ahead and check the handbook and see if the rates are right?
Thank you. Was, I had asked Doug to talk and have some discussion on hat wearing. I know that several schools around here have gone to aware, allowing kids to wear hats. And he had said they would have a conversation and get back to me, and it's in here that they can wear hats. So I don't know what he found. He's not here tonight, so it doesn't even know.
Curtis, were you part of any of those conversations by any chance?
I am.
Anybody at the high school part of those conversations? Is he all eyeballs to the ground? So that says not aware of that. I will find out.
I'm just, you know, it has, well, this is my problem. I'm just going to put it out there. We have people who are dressing different genders and I believe that's distracting to some kids, but other kids can't wear hats. So I don't understand how we can allow that to happen. We have boys wearing skirts, we have boys wearing fishnet stockings, and we are not allowing them, boys to wear hats. So, I mean, call me insensitive or not politically correct, but you know, I think we represent all students. And so if we're going to allow them to wear skirts and fishnet stockings, but we're not letting them wear hats, it doesn't make sense to me.
So is nobody allowed to wear a hat right now?
No.
Well then, girl, why wouldn't you go after some girls else that, you know, than the hats?
Well, there's just several schools around here that have allowed hats now. Used to it was respecting. Nobody has respect anymore, so they don't matter. But, um, you know, I just don't see the point why they can't wear a whole hat.
It's hard to tell who they are in a hallway.
And, and if they have their hood on, how do I tell if they have earbuds on through class?
I'm going to talk about hoods, cause I know hoods are a big difference. I just, I like.
That's fine, thanks.
We're going to let cowboy hats and baseball caps?
Well, I don't know. That's why I asked you to have a discussion.
And baseball caps.
And apparently that never happened.
It's also when you're trying to look at surveillance and your bike to that, and you're under the bike to the hats or others. So, so I have a personal, no paddle, or those, or anything. There would be, maybe a religious type thing, maybe acceptable, but not, not like a casual or a style thing.
And I would hope that if we're, one building's wearing hats, all buildings will be wearing hats.
That's why we did the secondary handbook together, so.
Right.
And I was on vacation. Josh and Doug did that, but I, I didn't, I didn't know about the conversation about hats.
I would like to propose that we not stop this from being printed, but we will have a report back on did that conversation take place? And if not, when will it?
And I just found the activity fee. It says show choir slash overtures EMS. That's one fifty.
Overtures is one fifty.
Corleones.
Yeah, Corleones is five, yep.
So with this being combined, Curtis, is the cell phone policy now the same between the high school and the middle school?
They are.
No, no cell phones during the day, no at lunch?
Yeah. Uh, no school, um, we're going to want to back the lockers next year. So we're going to eliminate backpacks. That's going to also further, um, restrict cell phone access, which, uh, I, I don't know about high school if they're, if they're going to have it.
What's the high school poli-, sorry, I'm on picking on you too, cause you're the only ones here. I'm a high school, but what's the policy on cell phones right now? A high school, but what's the policy on cell phones right now?
But it's, uh, just. What's your discretion?
How's that working for you? It's not a problem?
I know from personal experience, Ms. Johnson is really good at cell phones.
Are, are there some teachers who have them, who have kids doing work on?
Well, occasionally, occasionally there's a, I know there's reasons to utilize them in a classroom, but watching YouTube video in the middle of the.
I thought, I thought we were the same on that. I thought we were the same on that, that there were cell phones weren't allowed to be, uh, be locked there in schools. I know you're allowed to possess them, but they were powered off, you know, around here at school hours.
It's like a board policy states.
I think that's what she.
Not the following law approval or.
I think, I think that's what we're asking is like, and here it says no, but I know, because I've been to the high school, that's not how it is.
Yeah, I, I thought the middle school had a stricter cell phone policy.
You're correct.
Than the high school.
School, little school follows the board policy. The high school doesn't follow. There's a board policy on cell phones. I mean, don't follow.
But in the handbook, we need to follow what's in the handbook.
Do what's in the handbook.
Exactly. Just like the hats.
Take on that type. Okay? Something.
You know what? I, I hear you and I saw that at Talawanda, they had a no cellphone policy back in the day. And here, my daughter called me for lunch and I was like, where are you calling from? She's on my phone. I said, who's class are you? And same thing. Some teachers would let him use them and others didn't. It is, so the policy should be the same and be consistent and we should be monitoring the same. But I hear what teachers are saying. They would never get instruction about it if that's what they did all day long. I've also seen where teachers put those cell phone carriers over their door and they flop them in, in their, those carriers, and the door's shut, and then they take them out on their way out. There's ways to manage it. It's just how do you want to manage it? Cell phone lockers.
Lots of signal.
So, but the handbook is how it's being presented and that's what I'll justify and, and we should be aligning the policy.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm fine supporting the president whatever they want to do, that whatever we say we're going to do, we need to.
Right. Curtis, you're here tonight, so we say, as presented, correct?
Cell phones are, are, uh, are a problem in middle schools, so, uh, they're not quite ready to be responsible enough. So we pretty much, we, we prepare them. But I understand kids that walk to school, ride their bikes to school, and ride their bikes home and go get on buses to the ballgames. They need a phone for those events, but they need to be secured, to be powered off here today and, and they can access them during those times where they would need them. So that's, that's the balance. It would be hard to, like, they would roll, some kids would challenge it when we, we address it. We had a very successful implementation of our no cellphone rule last year. That was a big, a big deal. It was met very favorably by parents being students alike.
I heard a lot of Oz and offense about it.
I did too.
I don't think it's a problem for middle school. I think it's going to be a problem for high school.
You're correct.
I would agree. But there's phones in all the classrooms or, you know, for a form of communication against those emergency or anything like that.
I think what they're saying is, look, people are going to have phones on them. They're not supposed to be out and be distracting. And that's an instructional man, human piece that's supposed to be addressed.
Well, the problem is, is the teachers that don't want to enforce it are making it hard on the teachers who do enforce it, because now they're the bad guys. So if they all got together and they all enforced it, then it would, it wouldn't make it hard on the ones who are actually following the rules and doing what.
So this handbook is aligned to our policy and our policy is what any attorney will tell you we should be following. And if we want to make a change to that, then we need to change our policy. And that's not been proposed to this date. Right now, a proposal is to approve the handbook as presented, which is aligned to our policy.
Do you have a second? Question, second?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good. Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Question carries five zero.
Okay, and my superintendent update items will be quick. Uh, each of you received a copy of my goals for the year as well as outcomes of them. So if I said I was putting something together, you'll see an attachment. One example is the multi-tier, uh, structure of support, which will be rolled out in the fall to staff. But it's how we're going to track student learning in K-12. And then also, um, you've seen the update, my weekly updates, what I've done on my other goals in regard to, um, student engagement and student learning. So I just wanted to let you know what this was and before you. My second item is, um, I'm working with Madison, Middletown, Monroe, as well as our school district to organize quarterly meetings on, um, career partnerships with our, um, president of the chamber. Want to really make sure that we're increasing communication opportunities. What happens is at times we'll hear about, hey, if you want to participate in the county in this, in this activity, it might be a month or two before. We already have conflicting building or district programming going on. So we're trying to do a better job to plan ahead what that year's going to look like and how can we provide more opportunities for our students to access careers post-graduation. So I wanted to keep you in the loop of that. Another piece is that, um, I had a phone conference with Ohio School Facility Commission as well as Todd Thacker with S H P in regard to our facilities. And last month, we talked about a twenty-twenty or even, I believe it was a twenty-twenty report about our, our buildings and the conditions they're in. I was asking them, I said, certainly, um, with our past levy, we know that there's not an appetite in our community to access the bond funds. But by the way, Edgewood, just as a side mark, we're at the top of the list where if the community wanted to support facilities, which we know there's no money for that, that the state would pay forty-nine percent, the community would pay fifty-one percent of, of a new facility. But part of that program is they will come in and update. When we think futuristic rather than behind us, what do we see our, our pre-K-12 buildings looking like? In construction, looking like ten years out, twenty years out? And, and then, and then build a plan from there versus saying, we're going to go after this building and close it. Why don't we think about future, where we want to be, how can we get there? And let that plan guide how we will address our facilities. So, um, I did share with the House School Facility Commission that I would love to bring them in with our community in the fall and have some of those conversations. It doesn't mean that we're going on the ballot for a bond. We know that's, that's not going to be something our community wants to do. But it is nice to understand what does our community think about our facilities and where we want to be in the future. So wanted to keep you in the loop of that. So that would be a good community engagement conversation unless the board thinks that's too far out there in the future and that may create more problems than, than not, so.
I should probably know this by now. Have we scheduled any of the community engagement?
Yes. We, the community engagements already receive dates for next year and we've had invitations, people of interest.
Is that published anywhere or?
Well, I can share it with you. It's only published, so basically through a newsletter. It was sent out to the community. Whoever wanted on, the committee is on, and we're right now at twenty-four.
The dates were sent out in the newsletter?
In, only in the, no. Yes, yes, dates were sent out in the newsletter, but also an invitation was sent out from people that self-selected, reminding them of the dates and the time. But I'll, I'll share that with the.
Are we allowed to cover that as?
Absolutely. As long as there's no more than two board members. Because that would be considered a public leak. But remember when we signed up for committees in January? Whoever's part of that community engagement, that definitely is a board member that, that I would say if they don't want to be there, somebody else should be there in their place. I think he would, I think if Andrew was athletics.
Yeah, I remember. Oh, that sounds like something I'd sign up for.
Okay. But there could be two more, two people in that. All right, and then, um, I believe that completes my, my items. There are new legislative updates other than the fact that the biennial budget isn't looking like what we thought it was going to be. It could be worse, so more information coming in on that once it lands. And, uh, that concludes my information.
Thank you, Mrs. Spie. Next, we've got some items for board members. Looks like just up for discussion. And I believe we've touched on a little bit of it already with, uh, some grant money out here for Mark Road. Um, I think Mrs. Bowers might have even been preparing some information to get back with St. Clair Township. Um, obviously, we would not, not have a problem with them doing some work on this road out here. It's, it's definitely, uh, something to be desired with the way these kids drive up and down. It's as fast as a crosser go. So we'll just, uh, do our part as far as that goes. But I mean, I don't know if there's anything else anybody wanted to add about that. Other than that, we're going to go on to informational items from board members. Mr. York, would you like to start?
Well, just, uh, take a look at the student success newsletter that I passed out from Butler Tech.
Very nice. I was at Butler Tech at the end of the school year, Tom, and was learning about just additional program, new programs they want to add. Always impressed with their futuristic conversations.
Uh, I will say we, we had our Butler Tech board meeting last Tuesday. From start to finish, it was fourteen minutes and thirty-two seconds, and I think that's a goal that we should aspire to until July.
I second that. Is that all we got?
That's all I got. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. York. Mr. Messerschmidt.
Yeah, so we talked about it in the meeting tonight, um, you know, with the money that we're doing, or the work we're doing with the grant money and everything. And Alicia, you've done some really good things and really appreciate the effort you're putting in. But also want to throw a shout out to Neil Colgate too for the work he did, doing all that on his own. I mean, that's a great initiative and, and it's that kind of stuff that makes us the district that it is. So very appreciative, Alicia, for all your work. And Neil, if you're watching, appreciate what you did as well.
Thank you, Mr. Messerschmidt. Yeah, can that be done every year? Uh, we'll see you. But Mr. Pressler, would you like to add? Mrs. Ashcraft?
No.
I have one item that I want to address that would be our board meeting on September the twenty-fifth. Would anybody have a problem moving that up a week?
I would.
Thanks, thanks, buddy.
Why, why would you?
Why would you?
If we do, can we all go up?
Very important. It's Monday night. It's a Monday night Beatles game.
Oh, no.
Are you kidding me?
All right. I won't be here. I mean, I, I mean, I'm trying to group it up so you can see me on some. If you guys want to leave it, I, I can tell.
No, I, I'm good with the rest of the next part. So I can run my boss.
We can talk about it next month, but I don't think it'll be a problem. I, I don't, I don't manage my calendar.
I'll put yes if I can go.
Yeah, okay. Eighteenth.
I want to go guess if I have season tickets to another game. You don't go buy my vote.
So we're all in agreement to the eighteenth?
Sounds like you. Doesn't matter what I name.
I really appreciate that. So at this time, I'm going to look for a motion to move to executive session for the following reason. To discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Question carries five zero.
All right, we're back at eight forty-two. And I'm going to look for a motion to approve the administrative certified, classified, and supplemental nominations as presented. So Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?